If we could get everybody back to the table. Thank you, Nancy. Okay, so I'm going to call the Board of Directors work session open. And Bart, if you would take role again, would appreciate it.
Since we've only, we only had a 10 minute break, I'll just note for the record that everybody who was here before is still here.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Okay, and with that, I am going to turn the work session over to Scott.
All right, thank you, Madam President. So I appreciate having this discussion. I think this is a discussion that's needed. Every year, at least the intent is to bring our newly elected board members and returning board members to go through an orientation. We've started that process. We started that today. I think it was pretty successful. The board members that were able to attend did a tour of some of the, some of the offices, met some of the staffs. They went to facilities and maintenance building. We gave, each department had gave an overview of their department, the purpose, the mission, kind of what they do. And it really gives you an opportunity to take a look at the nuts and bolts of the organization. The other part about orienting one to the organization is really part of the onboarding, onboarding the board. And this is, you know, kind of a bigger discussion that really, not only, I think, teaches board members how to be board members, but it really talks about roles, responsibilities, teamwork, developing relationships, focusing on the mission, that type of thing. This discussion, to some degree, started in, I think it was January. There was some interest in doing a staff for a, an employee survey. And at the time, I embraced it, which I still think is fine, but I don't necessarily think it's necessary. I had suggested doing a, a broad management and leadership analysis by an outside third party consultant to really take a look at the organization more holistically. That would have included interviewing department heads, the CEO, board members, reviewing the governing documents, doing an anonymous survey from staff. And at that time, the board suggested that that discussion and that topic be taken up by the next board in April. Well, here we are. It's April. And as I said, I don't necessarily think we need to do an employee survey. That would generally be something that the HR director and I would do internally. If the board is concerned about what the employees think and how they feel about, for example, my leadership, and that's something the board wants to discuss, we can certainly do that. We can contract with an outside independent third party to do that. Since that time, I've provided an analysis to show the number of employees that have separated from the organization over a 10 year period. And hopefully you've, I think, I'm not sure everyone has seen that because you do have some new board members, but and for those of you that haven't seen it, I'm willing, I can certainly share it with you. It wasn't a secret. But it showed that there wasn't anything different about 21, 2021 than any other previous year. There, you know, we, we had two department heads that left really on their own for personal choices. There were some others that left, but when you really looked at the numbers, it really wasn't a unique special year. People leave, people come. That's just the nature of the business. So that is why I would argue that it would probably not be necessary to do that level of analysis. But I do think there is still a lot of importance in team building anytime a new board comes together in really understanding what your responsibility is as a board member, as a board as a whole. What's your relationship with the CEO, with each other, with staff? So I wanted to step back and have this kind of high level discussion with the board and really talk about what it is we would like to achieve and how we can move forward with that. I have certainly argued that there is great value in bringing in an outside facilitator to help with these types of situations. And I say that because certainly, you know, a lot of us have been there. We've done many of these types of retreat type things. But it does seem to carry a lot more weight and a lot more value if you have somebody that's from the outside that is completely dispassionate and objective. And I, I think that's important. For some reason, if you fly a consultant and they seem to have more credibility than anybody that's just here. So I, I think there's value in moving forward with some exercises like that, with some onboarding. Back in January, when we started this discussion, I had done a request for proposal, reached out to some local people as well as some national firms that did provide proposals that, that were associated with doing a management and leadership analysis. And the prices ranged really anywhere from about $14,000 to $15,000 to $80,000. I think $80,000 is just completely unnecessary and something that we don't need to do. One of the firms or persons that was recommended by the then Chair and Vice President of, of the board then Nina Camfield suggested a person named Teri Flores. I've had a conversation with Teri Flores since then, and we really hit it off well. I think she's got some great ideas. She's actually going to be facilitating our anti-bullying training over the next week. This is something that she has some great experience with. So we've already started a relationship with her. I talked to her yesterday because I wasn't quite sure if she had experience with this type of facilitation, which is a little bit more general. It's more about team building, roles, responsibilities, relationships, nonprofit boards, that type of thing. And she has, but that's really not her bailiwick. So she did recommend another firm. I'm going to see if I can share my screen here. Where'd it go? Give me a minute. Is that it? No. Okay, bear with me here. What's that expression? Talk amongst yourselves? Here we go. Okay. So the firm is called DoGoodBetter.com, which is kind of interesting. I'm going to see if I can't share this. Here we go. Technology. All right. There we go. So these are the two consultants. They're based in Tucson. Now, for those of you that were here last year, we did a strategic plan. We've talked about it a lot with members recently. In fact, yesterday, we had 27 people show up for the talk with the CEO about the strategic plan, which was really successful. I think people are really interested and engaged. So that's exciting. These two ladies here are the consultants. And they are based in Tucson. And when I spoke with Teri Flores about this, she highly recommended this firm. Do Good Better. Their names are Correo and Alexander. And they have an interesting process that let's see here, that I'm thinking I'd like the board to consider. And here is kind of this outline. They do an orientation. It's Zoom. It's on, it's from 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM, Mountain Standard Time, Arizona Time. It's $49 a person. I mean, you can't beat that. The next orientation is May 19th. I've talked to them about this. The items that they're going to talk about are really a lot of the items that I, I started to address in this staff report. They talk about roles and responsibilities of nonprofit boards and board members, the difference between management, governance, and support, building the partnership between the board CEO and staff, what great board members do, information new board members should receive, and protecting your board against liability. So this seems like kind of, it's, it's certainly kind of a boilerplate. If you're on a nonprofit board, here's the session you need to attend. I think this could be a great start to this discussion and something that is, is very needed. So I'm going to suggest that we consider doing this. If you're available the 9th, we could sign up. You don't have to decide today, but I'd like you to at least look at your calendar and see if this is something that you could schedule. The next session is unfortunately not until August 8th. I had an email exchange with Laura Alexander, who is one of the primaries with this firm. They're booked. They're solid. Apparently, they are the go-to firm for this type of training. And there are a lot of nonprofits in Southern Arizona. And so they are the ones, they are absolutely booked, and I suspect there is a reason. They came highly recommended. They've been through the trenches. They understand how, how boards can get sideways with one another and get sideways with their CEO. And they really work on building relationships. The irony about this is they worked with GVR 10 years ago. And we were able to pull up some of their previous work. They actually sent it. And when I went on to their website last night, sure enough, GVR is a client. And I thought, boy, that's funny. The, the thing about these types of trainings is, as I'm sure many of you know, you can't just do one training and then be done with it. This type of work taped takes ongoing education and diligence and a commitment. And that is one of the things that I talked about in January, when this topic first came up, is if this board is really going to move forward in a holistic way, become mission focused, become effective, really decrease the consternation, really focus on team building, we need to do something different. We really need to be, become more focused on why we exist, why we're here, and why we've come together as individuals to sit on this board to try to move this organization forward. And I think with some assistance and support and ongoing, ongoing work and commitment, we can get there. Some of the challenges that this board has, has experienced over the years are not new. And these people have experienced all of that themselves. So Laura Alexander and I tentatively have scheduled a, just kind of a, an introductory meeting. I think it's June 24th. They're booked until then. So I thought this intro board orientation could be a nice way to kind of ease into it. If you don't want to take the eight hour Susan Mogenson Brown Dog Policy Governance Training, which you can, you can do this one instead, or you can do it in addition to. It's not a lot of money, and it sounds like it gives you the real basic nuts and bolts of what's going on. So the meeting that I have scheduled on the 24th, I believe, of June, she's asked if the, the new president and I could have that conversation and just kind of talk about what are some of the things that we're interested in and accomplishing. And then they would help put together more of a tailored type of discussion or work session as opposed to this two hour kind of boilerplate training that, you know, we would schedule probably closer to, you know, the end of July or something like that. You know, my reservation is it's, you know, you've already been on, on the job three months at that point, but I don't think it's too late. There's a lot of work to be done. And honestly, after the, after the experience that I've had and some of the things that I've heard from our members, the number one thing I think this board, and I think our members would agree that this board needs to be working on, is really working on team building, conflict resolution, focusing on the organization, that type of thing. A lot of the nuts and bolts stuff, the capital projects, the finances, all of that's moving forward. We've got a great staff here, as you all know, that has, has kept this ship afloat for a very long time and will continue to do so. Where we really need to work and be diligent is, I think, on our board relations. And, and I think this is an opportunity to kind of, the word she used was a reset. This is a great opportunity for a reset. So we talked a little bit about maybe even going back to Teri Glass with Zelos, who helped us extensively with our strategic plan. And I think she's very good at what she does. We, you know, I think she enjoyed working with all of you and vice versa. The only problem is she's in Virginia. And I think there was some real interest in finding somebody local. And I think she would agree, it's better to have these types of conversations when you're talking to people rather than through Zoom. So with that, I'm just going to shut up, answer any questions, open it up for discussion, and see what your thoughts are.
Beth?
Um, could you tell me again why Teri Flores, that she was maybe not the right person for the job? I met with her and from what she said, she could, from what we talked about, she could definitely help us with any border staff issues and surveys and, and everything. So I'm surprised that she recommended somebody else. And I, and my second comment is I know you're concerned about us surveying the staff to see what they think of you or the board or whatever. It doesn't matter. But because there isn't anything to compare it to. But if we don't do an initial survey in three to five years, we still won't have anything to compare it to. So I'm thinking it might not be helpful this year, but going forward, it might be helpful. So I don't think we should necessarily rule that out.
Okay. So I did speak with Teri Flores about this again, and she said that, she said it really isn't her bailiwick. She's, she's, so she's an attorney, first of all. She really has more of a legal perspective. She looks at the governing documents. And in her words, she usually comes in when there's, as she said, bodies laying all over. And that's usually because there's been such conflict and such an explosion and huge problems. She kind of comes up and cleans things up. And if need be, she'll step in and even be the interim CEO if necessary. She, you know, based on that, you know, the others, their education isn't in law, you know, and lawyers aren't the touchiest, feelyest people.
I resent that.
So, you know, she just said, you know, I can do this, but it's really not my area of expertise. I usually come in as kind of part of the cleanup crew. When you go onto Teri Flores's website, it does talk a lot about how she does investigations. She solves problems after there have, have just been a lot. There's been a huge upheaval, that kind of thing. She helps pull things back together. And my understanding is she does that by, from a legal perspective, looking at the legal documents, the bylaws, the, the, the other corporate governing documents, and tries to put things back into a place that makes sense and it works for, for the organization. She can still do it, you know, some type of survey of the employees. If that's, if that's what we want her to do, if that's what the board wants her to do, she could do that piece of it. I, this, this group, I think, could probably do that as well. So you could really go either way. But by her own admission, this type of thing where you're really talking about, you know, teamwork, understanding what makes an effective board, how, what a good board member is, that type of thing. She really strongly recommended this other firm for that particular scope. Hopefully that answers both questions. So yeah, if the board wants to move forward with a broader employee survey, generally, you know, I would, I think, argue, and I'd be curious what Teri Flores and this firm would say. I would generally say that's a personnel matter and something that would usually be handled internally anyway, unless the board was terribly concerned about what was happening and there was evidence of just a huge exodus from the organization, then certainly I think it would be warranted. Teri said, you know, based on her understanding that that type of analysis would be a waste of money. And that's what she said to me. So it's up to the board. It really is. I, I'm not concerned about doing an employee survey. I can tell you right now, probably 5% of them don't like me.
Beth, you had your hand up.
Statistically speaking.
Go ahead.
When this, when I first heard about this concept of, you know, getting the board together to do these training and getting along and all, you know, my thought was, well, it's a new board, you know, we don't probably need it. And, but I'm thinking about it more. I feel like it would be great to start out on the right foot, to start out with this kind of training and not get ourselves into, you know, a hole before we then, you know, try to dig out of it. And I, if, if people find that this has been helpful, which I gather they have, since it sounds like hundreds of people are signing up to do this. And, and I personally have only ever run my own company, so I didn't have to get along with a whole lot of, I mean, you know, I didn't have to consider a whole lot of other people's opinions. I think, I'm just saying, I, I think we really should consider it seriously as something that we might, we would like to, I personally would like to get into. And I think the board might do well to take the time to do this. So I think, okay, so I would make a motion that, that Scott.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Beth. This is a work session, so we can't take any motions. But thank you. Thank you for your input. Laurel, you've got your hand up.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm sort of differ with that. You have six brand new members on the board. And we have, you know, we have a chance, hopefully, to prove ourselves before you just assume there's going to be a lot of conflict. So that's just one thing. The second thing is, every one of us has brought certain passions to this based on what the members have been asking us to do. And if you don't involve that passion and understand what each of us is bringing to the board as far as things that the members are asking us to help control the dues, make sure that we get priorities set and followed, stay within the budget. You know, those are the things that cause the conflict. So if we don't even know what everybody's sort of bringing as far as what they think the board ought to be doing, we've already got the potential of conflict. So team building isn't going to erase that. So we need to understand what the passions of each person are based on what the members are saying. This is what we expect you to do. So I'm sort of leery about hopping right into it, especially if you're doing it in the summer when six of your members or at least five are not physically in Green Valley. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else? Carol?
I'd like to make two points. One, for 49 bucks, it might be well worth all of us sitting through that class. I know, I went to a class at Freeport-Mackay, paid for, for new board members of all kinds of non-crop, and it was a good class. And I forget everything I learned, I think, because it was four or five years ago. So I, I, for 49 bucks, I would take another class, and I think we could all learn something. And education never hurts anybody. My recommendation would be, let's take the class. Let's you two meet with this lady and see what she has to say. Let, let's take a checkpoint after the class, because I think a piece of what Laurel said is right on. What we need to do more than anything else is figure out our roles and responsibilities and get on with delivering to our membership. I mean, that's, we're all going to feel better and we're all going to work together better when we believe we're doing stuff for our members. And so I, I think that's a key part of what we need to do to bring ourselves together. And so my recommendation is take the class for anybody that wants to take the class. You guys meet with this lady because it might not get scheduled until fall anyway, it sounds like. And the third, if we decide we need to do it, but give us, give us a little time to see if we can work as a team. We're putting together new committees. I mean, I, I'm dedicated to bringing half the, my committee from last year and half new people. So I really want to pull people together. Let's see if we can't do that and, and move forward. But I'm fine with the training.
Thank you. Scott, did she mean for you and I to meet with her, just you and I to meet and determine what we wanted?
You and I to meet with her.
Bart?
Thank you. I, I don't know if, if any of you have noticed, but I'm, I tend to be kind of tight with a dollar. And the experience last year with Teri Glass was to me a little unsatisfying. I will tell you that when it comes to contracts like hers, which if I remember right, was $30,000. Is that correct? It's 30,000 simoleons. I try to visualize a room with 60 GVR members in it. 60 times 505 bucks is about 30,000 bucks. And explain to them why it is that for them, all of their dues for that year would be going to Teri Glass. Now, I realize that this is an obviously artificial construct in that we're actually plucking much smaller amounts out of the pockets of GVR members. But to me, it's very useful. And I will, I will be frank, I, I didn't feel like GVR got $30,000 worth of product out of that process. I, I felt from the beginning, and I still believe, that in GVR's staff, which is very capable, there is in-house ability to do anything that Teri Glass did in the development of that strategic plan. I can tell you that in the time that I was on active duty, probably four or five times in the 21 years that I was there, the offices in which I was working were tasked with preparing strategic plans. And every office without exception found that it did have the capability within it to do that. I understand, Scott, your desire to get guidance that's, as you put it, dispassionate and objective. But I still think that we have that ability within the board and within the staff here at GVR to do that. As far as team building goes, I think it's safe to say that we're already, right here today, April 20th, miles ahead of where we were last year. I mean, we still have as a majority faction and a minority faction, but we have officer, we have an officer from the minority faction. We have two committee chairs from the minority faction, which is something that obviously never happened previously. So I, I'm reluctant to anticipate problems that in my estimation are actually unlikely to occur. So I guess what I'm getting around to is I, I myself am very reluctant to spend a lot of GVR money on consultants for the purpose that you've described when I believe GVR staff and the board has right here, right now, the ability to do that without paying somebody else additional money to do it. Thanks.
Barbara?
Well, I'm brand new, and I would really appreciate somebody coming in and teaching all of us and especially me, how to work as a really good group. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
I agree with at least three directors that I've heard so far here. I agree with Laurel and Bart that we don't know how this board's going to turn out yet. And it could be that the, the consternation could be at a different level than it was in the past, just based on just based on six new people. I also agree with Bart that it's a lot of money to spend for something that might be fruitless if there is no problem in the, in the, to deal with as it, as it may turn out not to be. I guess my English, my grammar is getting screwed up here. But so I, I, I think we should wait and see if we need something like this later and not spend money now anticipating disaster when there may be no disaster. I also agree with Bev in that without the employee surveys, I don't think there's any reason to do it. Employee surveys are very valuable, not only to the, to the CEO, in this case, whoever's the leader, but also to the other employees and to the board, how the employees feel about the board and, and the management of the corporation. Nothing to me is more telling than an employee survey. And I've, I've managed a number of organizations and I would have gladly gone ahead with an employee survey and, and would have been very interested to see what the result was as me as a leader. So I would definitely leave that in if we're going to do it. Thank you.
Yes.
A couple of questions. I'm a little confused. This thing about the, the actual requested is to seek an independent party to do a consult, management leadership analysis, et cetera. And then it says the attached proposals. And did we get those in an email or not? I don't see any proposals. And then this, and are we to consider that as a motion? And/or this orientation or this, uh, with, with this, dogoodbetter.com, is that a separate issue? Because I think this two hour meeting for 49 bucks seems like a, or actually hour and a half meeting looks like a really great idea. Is that a separate issue?
So this, the staff report that's prepared with today's date, April 20th, there are no attachments listed there other than the staff report from January 19th. The January 19th talks about those proposals, but I only referenced the staff report. I didn't provide any of the proposals because I wasn't quite sure what you were interested in doing. So those aren't here. So you're really not asked to take any action other than, you know, we could bring back proposals, we could do nothing, we could sign up for this meeting on, or this training on the ninth, that type of thing. I, I want to add a few things. So I started January 21. So I have been here now, what is that, February, March, April 12? That's 15 and a half months. And you may not know this, but you are the third board that I have worked for in 15 months. That's how fast you guys turn over. There are two of you here that were here when I was hired. That's Donna and Bev. Everybody else is brand new. So you all can sit here and talk about how you're going to work together and everything's going to be great and we're doing all these great things. But you're not going to be here very long. I know that because that's the history. Before this year is over, several of you will likely resign anyway. And that's just the reality of it. So even though things are great, it's a kumbaya moment. The point that I tried to make when I said, look, this firm worked with GVR 10 years ago was, look, 10 years ago, GVR was having some of the same problems it's having now. You can make a commitment to make things work, but you're not in charge a year from now. You're not even here. So the, the idea, the goal was to get the ball rolling for future boards, not just this board, but for future boards. And I can tell you, I don't have the expertise to lead you through this type of process. Neither does our staff and we don't have the time. We are very busy. That is one of the benefits of having a consultant. And I understand the Air Force is a very large organization. You have different divisions, for example, that focus on this type of thing. We don't have that here. We don't have that here. So I think it's, it's a different ball of wax. The bigger concern here is, and this started right when I, when I got to GVR. It was even before I got to GVR. I mean, I, I think some of you know the process that I went through becoming the CEO. There was a lot of consternation then. There's been a lot of consternation since then. The history in speaking with board members, with staff, with members of the organization that have been here for years. They wanted improved communication. That's what they want. That's what our members want. And they also want less board consternation. Those are the two things. And it wasn't just because of the last board or the previous board or the previous board. It's because there's been a history. There's been a longstanding history of board infighting and consternation at GVR. And I just want to ask, how many of you have actually sat on a nonprofit board before GVR? Two. So there is value in training. What does it mean to be a board member? You know, we can read the, the documents. I've learned last year that there are different, and we interpret those documents very differently, very differently. I read them as I read them at face value. Other people have read them with a completely different understanding. And I think it's really important that we develop a shared understanding of what those documents mean. What does that say? What is your role as a board member? I don't think I can tell you what that is. I don't, I can try. I'm not sure you're going to listen to me. But if somebody else is saying, look, I have worked with hundreds of boards. This is the standard practice to be an effective board. And this is the role that an effective board member plays. And this is what the relationship between the board and the CEO looks like in a higher functioning organization. I mean, I can speculate what that's going to look like and share that with you, but I don't know that it's going to carry the same weight. So that is one of the reasons that I strongly advocate for bringing in someone, even if it costs some money. And I say that because, boy, we wasted a lot of money in the last few years. Boy, were we inefficient with those dollars. The amount of staff time working on projects that really didn't move forward. We were, we were very inefficient. There was a lot of consternation. There was a lot of infighting. There was a lot of negativity. And all of that could be improved. It could be mitigated. I'm not sure it's going to go away, but it could certainly be improved. That's where I think we waste our dollars. We could do the employee survey. I have no problem with that. What I will say is I've provided in a confidential memo, a lot of comments from our staff. There is a lot of employee morale challenges here. And those existed mostly before I got here. It costs a lot of money to GVR every time an employee walks out of the door here. So the way this board functions really has a lot to do with our recruiting efforts and our retention efforts, too. I do know that several of our previous staff that left were so tired of the board infighting, they wanted to have nothing to do with GVR. And that is true. That is absolutely true. And that's where we have lost a lot of money. So if we're going to spend 10,000, 20,000, 30,000, I don't know. I really don't know. What I can tell you is in the long run, I believe it's going to save us money. I really do.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Beth.
So what, what I'm gathering from what you're saying is that the, the beginning of this, if we agree to it, that somehow there'll be hopefully some carryover, some institutional learning that takes place that then carries through to future iterations of the board? Is that, is that the hope?
It, it is. See, I think there needs to be a fundamental cultural change at GVR. Because this isn't just this board of the, this is a fundamental cultural change. And it has impacted our departments as well. It's impacted our members as well. And it needs to change because it is a huge negative on the organization. Staff morale, efficiency, the brand, the image of the organization. I'm out in, in the community a lot. And I, some of the very first things I hear are, I'm so tired of the infighting. I want to have nothing to do with GVR because of the consternation that goes on. You know, I use the facilities. I don't vote. I don't participate. I don't want to volunteer. I don't want to read about it. And that's an image problem. I mean, really, we are a brand and we are trying to sell GVR. The good news is, is it kind of sells itself. We've got a beautiful environment, a beautiful setting, great facilities, great services. And all that is wonderful. The, the board and the relationship that the board has with one another, with the CEO, staff, et cetera, has been a detriment to this organization. And, you know, what, what is that definition of insanity as expecting different results and doing the same thing? And I'm not interested in doing the same thing. I'm really not. We're here in it for the long haul. We really are. I mean, all these people over here have been here for years. I've only been here 15 months and barely. I mean, you know, I think most of you know that I was looking elsewhere. And I'm, I'm happy it didn't, it didn't work out. I'm really happy to be here and I want to emphasize that because I think there's so much potential here. But we really need a commitment to move forward in positive ways. And I am not confident, and this has nothing to do with our abilities or our inabilities, but I'm not confident that we can't, that we can move forward and change this culture without some assistance. We're all going to have a huge role in that, though. And it really does need to, to involve a commitment to making it happen. Otherwise, I expect we will continue getting the same results.
Steve?
Yeah. The, uh, this has been kind of tried before with the policy governance issue and the training that went along with that. Bev, you were here for that, weren't you? Yeah. And Donna, you were, you were here for, maybe Carol was too. As you can tell, that didn't have a big impact. And the fact that board members are constantly changing, as you pointed out, Scott, is certainly true. And there could be, this time next year, there could be six different board members here. So what is the benefit of all the training when the, the new people come in and aren't trained, so to speak? To be honest with you, I think in order to make the big change that we need to make to make this a better organization, I'm not sure that trying to train us to be better citizens and better friends with each other is going to be the answer. I really think the answer is to move to a professional board. And I, that would solve a great deal of the problems and make the, the GVR members a lot more, a lot happier in the, in the, in the, in the end. But in the meantime, it's going to cost more money because you're going to have to pay the professional board. But I really think a professional board is the answer that we need because we're a bunch of old farts that think we know everything because we've been so successful in our previous careers that we are ready to change the world and we're not. We're just, we're just a bunch of retired people trying to, trying to justify our existence and continued survival. So I think a professional board is, is really the answer. Maybe you can take a look at that, Scott. Thanks.
I'd like to make a comment first, if you don't mind, Scott. I have to disagree with Steve with regards to getting a professional board. I think that's going to increase the costs for GVR to a point that we're going to, we're going to lose people who just won't pay their dues. I, I think they do like to think that they can depend on the people that they vote for. And I think that, that the people we have here are in a position to do that for them. I don't have a problem with spending $49 per board member for, for a session. I'm always open to learning something new. I liked Terry Glass very much for what she did for us on the strategic plan. But I was one of the people that, that Scott talked to that preferred to deal with somebody local. I'm, I'm not crazy about having to do business on Zoom when everybody's coming from a different spot. But, but that's the world that we live in. So that, I guess that's the world that we're going to keep dealing with. So, but I would like to just put in my, my two cents where that I think it's, it's worth the time and the effort along with an employee survey to have something to measure in future years.
Carol?
I, I guess I would suggest going forward here that what, we're going to bring a motion to the next meeting, right? Of next steps. Is that your plan?
I don't think you have to. I mean, it's certainly, I think, within my purview to work with this agency and schedule 12 reservations if I need to. And if those of you that want to participate, you can do that. It's not one of those things. It's not really a policy decision, I don't think. So I don't think you have to.
Okay. And I guess on that line, along that same line then in terms of, and you mentioned it, and I know you've consistently said this, Scott, that you, you believe that a, an employee survey is a fine thing to do. It's a good tool for management and so forth. But that's something that you could, you can, would be within your purview also, right? So I mean, I, and I think that's, I was, you know, as a board, minority board member, I was dead set against what happened last year. And I thought that people were totally out of line in some of the things they did. And you, you are our CEO and I would urge you to do the HR personnel things that you think are best for the organization. And that often is a very good thing to do. I've lived with those for my entire career and I learned an awful lot. And I think you would say the same thing. But I don't think that that necessarily is a board issue. I would like to have you come back to us with what you want to do because you think it's best for our organization on, on that particular issue. Go ahead, Scott.
Well, I appreciate all the input and the feedback on this. I, I want to thank Steve for bringing this up too. Because I didn't want this just to be a discussion about do we move forward with a $49 charge? This is a much bigger discussion. And the fact that you were able to, willing to step out and say, oh, I think one of the things we need to do is, you know, if we really want to change things, is get a professional board. That's the real type of discussion to a great degree that, that we need to have. I mean, my big question is how are we going to move forward as an organization and not keep doing the same thing? And a $49 session isn't the solution. I mean, it can help do a, a quick reset, but I think we do need to have that real honest discussion. And I'm hoping that today's meeting is kind of the beginning of that. I think that's what your members want. That's what I've been hearing is we want something different. And so my question really is what can we, what can you as individual board members now that make up the board do differently to, to try to right this ship, to try to improve the culture of the organization so that we don't continue having repeats every year and then have to kind of go home wounded every day?
I did a calculation a few months ago and I, I'm an aftermarket accountant. So that means I learned about accounting after I thought I knew everything else, which is kind of dangerous. But it, it lets you do things outside the accounting box that accountants would never have the guts to do. So I did a quick and dirty and I figured for, if we, for 20 bucks a year per member, we could hire a professional board. Now, maybe it's 18, maybe it's 15, maybe it's 23. But I don't think it'll be that expensive to fund a professional board. And the members, the, the benefit, theoretically, the benefit would far outweigh 20 bucks a year.
Ted, you had your hand up. Did you still want to speak?
Yes, I would. Normally, you try to let everyone have a chance to speak, you know, before everyone had three or four times to speak. That's okay. Looking at this, it's taken us 50 years to get where we're at right now. And we, I used to tell teachers, you can have 50 first year experiences or 50 years of experience. And I'm afraid we've had 50 years of first year experiences. And we got to start somewhere. And I think we need to start now. I agree with Scott. I also agree with, with some of the some of, some of what just everybody pretty much said. But we got to realize it's going to take time. And if we don't start now doing something, we're going to be in the same place. I listened to some of you and I thought, well, gosh, they said, well, last year, well, last year was not the work year for GVR, by the way. I've talked with plenty of the old people. You go back to twenty seventeen, you go back before that, they were going to hang somebody, they hang, they hung somebody, an effigy. You know, so it's not something that just is current, happened right now. And it's going to take a while to to fix. Some of the thing is, we've got to let go and I think, Steve, I think you said it, that we're just a bunch of old something or others. I won't repeat that, to think we know it all. And I think we all need to recognize, sure, we may have some expertise. And I've been on a number of boards before. I've been on, I've ran recreation departments and stuff. So I have some expertise, but I also understand that all of you have a lot of expertise, too. And we need to learn to work together. And I think that's the thing. And I think that's what Scott's trying to do, is trying to find a way that we can can work together. And I just hope that we can put aside some of our petty things you're saying. Some of you are saying, let Scott do his job. But then you're saying, Scott, no, I don't want you to do this here, or no, I don't want you to do that there. Let's just let him do his job and and figure out what policy is and then what also we're supposed to keep track of whether we're achieving things. And but what is that exactly? That's the first thing we've got to find out. But I want to say that I think we should go ahead and move forward with what Scott has recommended and keep the other things in the back of our mind because at least it's a small investment to begin with, with that, with the forty nine dollars or whatever. But I'm looking at that we need to have opportunities to respect one another. And opportunities to recognize that we don't always know exactly what's right. Right now, in our country, in our state, Steve, Devin, and in our towns, we have a lot of the same thing going on that we're talking about right here. It's also with the citizens in Green Valley and members of Green Valley. And maybe we ought to try to become the light upon the hill as an example to others, as opposed to always wanting our own way and how you're bad.
Thank you, Ted. Laurel, you had your hand up. Did you want to speak still?
Laurel? Yes. I just want to say, I heard a couple of things today that I think are part of what the language that needs to disappear. The minority and the majority. We're one team. We are not minority, majority. We're for the members. So that language in itself, there's no sides anymore, I hope. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Well, so thank you. Again, I think this is hopefully the beginning of the conversation or the end of the conversation. You know, I, again, I think we can move forward. For those of you that want to sign up for this, we're going to encourage it. I don't expect that we're going, this is not going to be a silver bullet. This is going to be a boilerplate discussion for if you're a new nonprofit board member, here's what best practices looks like. And so that's going to be a two hour session on that. It's forty nine dollars. You can sit at your home and watch it. It seems like it's a pretty easy lift and I would encourage everyone to do that. I'm certainly going to do it as well. The president and I will meet with the 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 head of this firm and talk about what are the possibilities about doing something a little bit more specific to GVR, maybe hearing some of the concerns. In some of the retreat type things that I've done in the past, we will have the consultant actually talk with each board member and say, hey, what do you think are the problems? What are the concerns? What are the challenges, et cetera? Based on that, they'll kind of develop kind of a a specific agenda and protocol to to move forward. But we can cross that bridge when we get there. Hopefully, this will be a good start. You all went through, for the most part, orientation today. There's some really good information in the packet that we gave you. You know, I think a lot of the discussion, a lot of these problems really brought about the whole discussion and potential solution about policy governance. That the the intent, I think, was there. The intent was to try to make this a higher functioning board, where there was a clear delineation between the roles and responsibilities of CEO, board, board members and staff. And it it kind of got convoluted, it seems. That's unfortunate. Many of us, I think, will agree that the philosophy of policy governance makes a lot of sense. I don't think it's a one size fits all type of scenario, though. But there is a crib note type of booklet in your orientation manual that gives you a really good overview philosophy without kind of browbeating you about what it is about. So I would encourage you all to take a look at that. And even even the Brown Dog Consulting discussion, I think that was very valuable. And I think some of the sessions in that were really, really helpful about what it means to be a board member. And those, I think, are tried and true. This session through this particular firm in Tucson, I suspect they're going to say very similar things. You know, John Carver didn't invent good governance. I think he just capitalized on it and did a very effective job at it. But there are some tenants of good governance that I think are tried and true. And they transcend different organizations and and different models that we can look at. But I think there's some real similar parallels. And they're there for a reason. They're good standard practices that a lot of boards have adopted for that particular reason because they are good standard practices. So hopefully, this will kind of start the conversation going forward. As I said, I'll get us signed up. For those that want to sign up, we'll send out an RSVP and like, and you can respond and we'll sign you up. Hopefully, that'll work. And then Kathy and I'll meet with her the end of June and we'll go from there. So I want to thank you all for a conversation. I think this was really good. I appreciate your input on this.
Thank you, everybody. And I'll take a motion for, do we take a motion for adjournment or we just leave? Everybody get up and leave. Okay, thank you, everybody for coming.